Marie Hairs. Mike Douglas. Scott Fields.
Here.
Wayne Gibson.
Here.
Rusty Orick.
Here.
Jerry Byrd.
Here.
Warren Kids.
Here.
J.C. Miller.
Here.
Monty Welders. Eugene Justice.
Here.
Beverly Hall.
Here.
Greg Lee.
Here.
Charles Bear.
Here.
Michael Cox.
Look, I just came in. Lieutenant Turner, I'm making notes with crew agenda.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Miller to approve the agenda in a second, please, by Mr. Justice. Any discussion about the agenda? Not seeing any, Kyle Rowell.
Marie Hairs.
Here. And yes?
Scott Fields.
Yes.
Wayne Gibson.
Yes.
Rusty Orick.
Yes.
Jerry Byrd.
Yes.
Warren Kids.
Yes.
J.C. Miller.
Yes.
Eugene Justice. Yes. Beverly Hall.
Yes.
Greg Lee.
Yes.
Charles Bear.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Appreciate that. I need a motion to approve of the previous planning commission minutes.
I'd like to motion to approve the minutes of previous meeting.
Have a motion by Mr. Miller, second by, also Mr. Gibson. Any discussion on the previous planning commission minutes? I'll see any, Kyle Rowell, please.
Marie Hairs.
Yes.
Scott Fields.
Yes.
Wayne Gibson.
Yes.
Rusty Orick.
Yes.
Jerry Byrd.
Yes.
Warren Kids.
Yes.
J.C. Miller.
Yes.
Eugene Justice.
Yes.
Beverly Hall.
Yes.
Greg Lee.
Yes.
Charles Bear.
Yes.
Motion passes.
It approved. Uh, we, it looks like we have not a big agenda tonight. We have, it's like six items on the agenda. I guess we'll start with one, review of Carable UGB expansion project, Harold Edwards. Mr. Edwards, you want to come up before the planning commission, sir?
First of all, thank you. My name's Harold Edwards. I got served as Carable's planning consultant. And this is just a courtesy call to let you know that Carable is proposing to expand their urban growth boundary. And just a brief explanation about an urban growth boundary. That was required back about nineteen ninety-nine by the General Assembly. That by the year two thousand, all communities had to develop a urban growth boundary. And that was a twenty-year plan to identify the areas that the city may grow. Uh, first of all, annexation cannot occur unless that property is included in the urban growth boundary. There's two areas that Carable is looking to expand their urban growth boundary. And one is to the north, to the industrial park. And the other is a little bit to the south. So what I wanted to do was to bring the map, just as I said, as a courtesy, to inform you, let you kind of see what's going on. It is not required for your approval, but I, we would like to essentially have your endorsement of the, of the map. I only have one map here, so if we can maybe just pass that around. I don't know if anyone has, has seen this or not. We've had two public hearings with the town of Carable. And the legend shows. The legend shows that.
Email.
The urban growth boundary proposed is in the light purple. And this is the industrial park up here. Uh, it, in no way will have an impact on Campbell County government. Again, it's just identifying area of potential growth for the town of Carable.
What's the process, Mr. Edwards?
Big part.
The process it goes through, once it leaves us for a blessing.
Well, the next step, and it has passed two public hearings with the town of Carable. Uh, the mayor for Carable will contact the mayor, Lynch, for Campbell County. He will call a coordinating committee meeting, which includes representatives from each, or the mayor or their representative from each municipality. The utility director or their designated, Mr. Wallace. The Chamber of Commerce representative. And they will review and actually take formal action to approve the map. Then that will be submitted to essentially local government advisory committee for adoption. And there is a, it's, it's a little bit of a lengthy process, but the, the town has already done their two public hearings. There will be required two public hearings with the coordinating committee and then go on to local advisory committee. And then registration in the register deeds office, uh, for, first by the Secretary of State and then the register deeds office here in Campbell County.
Are there timeframes that this needs to take place? Can we actually sit on this for a month and siphro it out?
Well, yes, but actually there's no, I'd be glad to leave the map with you. There's no, um, action, formal action that is required. As I said, it's a courtesy call. Uh, let me, I think what, let me just leave the map with you.
Okay.
And planning commission members can review it at their convenience.
Sure.
And, uh, and we'll go from there. If you have any questions, ask Jordan.
Not trying to slow the process down. I think as far as me, I'd like to sit and siphro through. I'm sure the rest of the members do also the same. And I know there's a lot of difference once it gets to annexation.
Yeah, well, annexation's a totally different.
Totally different.
Of all that.
Yeah, it is. But I do understand the urban, the urban growth boundaries.
Yes, okay, well, thank you. Is that fine with you all? And is it fine with the commission?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. I'll leave that with you. There's River Van.
Yes, sir. The area that, uh.
We're looking. Eagle Rock.
Rock.
Section. In this one. This is what's.
Yes. Yes.
I'll make sure. This here, nothing. This is already in.
Yes.
The south park is this section here on the other side?
The south park right here.
Right here.
Here. This is the south. And as you take a look at this map, it shows what the, uh, shows Jacksonboro and it shows La Follette also in there.
Well, I think we'll, we'll look at it, you know, we'll put it out there and you all can look at it maybe after the meeting or something like that. I sent out, I believe it's in the email I sent you all as well, so take a look at it. This is a bigger, bigger copy here to look at. I don't have any issue with it, you know, but you all take a look at it.
Mr. Edwards, would you lay it on that table or?
Sure.
And when we, when we reset, we're actually sitting down this much. Maybe snap a picture of it.
Okay. And I thank you again for the courtesy.
Yes, sir, thank you for the.
That's supposed to not be that.
Uh, the urban growth boundaries, it was required by the General Assembly up by two thousand and one was when they had to have it completed. A little research that I did, about seventy-five percent of the communities in the state have not updated their urban growth boundaries. And I think it's, it's time, uh, the, the state is growing and the community is growing and we need to have a little bit of vision to be prepared for this. Thank you so much.
One question.
Yes.
Who determines these boundaries?
The, uh, planning commission has identified those. They sent it on to the, uh, city council or board of mayor and aldermen. And, and they approved the map in two pu, uh, two public hearings.
What determines that?
What determines it? Or, well. A lot of, a lot of utility extensions, uh, part of this is the industrial park.
Sure.
To the north. And it's anticipated that industry will continue to grow in there. And in order for the city to provide urban services, it probably needs to be in the city limits. Okay.
Any more questions, Mr. Edwards?
I don't think Campbell County has amended their original, I'm not a hundred percent sure of that, but I don't, I don't know that we have.
Probably not. Like I said, about seventy-five percent of the communities in the state have yet to change the urban growth boundary that was adopted in two thousand and one. So. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Harold.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the Minor Lots subdivision of Glen Mayo Field, Charlotte Lane. We got a representative there. Come on up, sir. Are you Mr. Mayo or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so.
You've got copies that you can present to the.
Yeah. I get a six-tenths acre off my daughter's son-in-law's property to build a house on.
Okay. If you, if you've got two copies, give one to this side and one this side so they can actually address it. If you have a small copy and if we need to, we'll pull up the screen and look at it in a clearer fashion.
Mr. Mayo.
Yes.
Say, remind me, did you submit a septic permanent application? What's the status of the?
Yes, it's done.
Signature is on. You got the signatures on up there? I talked to Mr. Mayo a few times before on the front end and made him want to make sure he did everything right and. By my estimation, yeah, so.
What's your recommendation, Jordan?
Recommend approval.
We have a recommendation from the.
I'd like to motion to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Miller to approve. I need a second for approval. Have a second, uh, by Mr. Justice. Any discussion? Not seeing any, Kyle Rowell, please.
Marie Hairs.
Yes.
Scott Fields.
Yes.
Wayne Gibson.
Yes.
Rusty Orick.
Yes.
Jerry Byrd.
Yes.
Warren Kids.
Yes.
J.C. Miller.
Yes.
Eugene Justice.
Yes.
Beverly Hall.
Yes.
Greg Lee.
Yes.
Charles Bear.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Adam has been approved. Number three on the list is the Minor Lots subdivision, Roger and Judy McCarter, Strawberry Lane. Roger, you can come on up and talk to us, too.
I'll talk to back here.
Basically just taking more than, dividing it, not, not quite in half, but cutting off a piece of it. We need to talk about criteria, needs our.
I have, I have a recommendation from the planner.
I'd like to motion to approve.
I need, have a motion by Mr. Miller to approve. I need a second.
This one has sewer?
Yes, there is sewer on the property.
And the carport being cut and hacked don't matter?
No, that's, that's already the situation. Yeah, that's somebody else. That's, that's already the case. I say that to, that's not changing. Do you have your signatures in place for?
I don't know, uh.
Yeah, you'll need to get.
Whoever is.
Who is the sewer?
It's like, in a license.
What's that?
License.
Oh, is it, is it?
Sewer.
License said it from.
Rocky Top Sewer, yes.
Yeah, they'll have to send someone to put a signature on it. So we, on contingents, in my current, Mr. Miller, on a signature to the sewer, I need a second to approve. Second with Mr. Kids. Any discussion concerned? Strawberry Lane. I'll see any, Kyle Rowell, please.
Marie Hairs. Scott Fields.
Yes.
Wayne Gibson.
Yes.
Rusty Orick.
Yes.
Jerry Byrd.
Yes.
Warren Kids.
Yes.
J.C. Miller.
Yes.
Eugene Justice.
Yes.
Beverly Hall.
Yes.
Greg Lee.
Yes.
Charles Bear.
Yes.
Motion is passed. Roger, I appreciate what you do for the benefit of this town. You've been hosting quite a few of the breakfasts for county commission, the mayor's office. Appreciate what you do. Uh, the next item on the agenda is number four. It's a minor lots subdivision taking the lane highway two ninety-seven. Come on up, please.
Mr. Cabron, you're just, they're just cutting off the track from the larger.
Yeah, the field and then a build lab known about eight and a half, nine acres down there on two ninety-seven, just past Newcombe. And part of it sits on one side of two ninety-seven, part of it sits on the other side, about three acres. This is the three acres that sits on the north side. It doesn't change anybody's property lines. It's the same lot configuration. It's just that part of their property that's on that side of the road.
Yeah.
And she has obtained TDEC approval. The TDEC rep has signed the plot already.
Yeah, I spoke with her a minute, a few months ago, but I, I remember now, looked at the property, but yeah, it's pretty straightforward. Very simple plot. I don't see any issues with that. Yeah, and he says he's got the, the signature for septic, septic, and, um, everything looks good.
Approval has been made by our planner. I need a motion, second to approve.
I'd like to motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Miller.
Yeah.
I need a second to approve the two ninety-seven portion. Mr. Justice. Any discussion? Not seeing any, Kyle Rowell, please.
Marie Hairs.
Yes.
Scott Fields.
Yes.
Wayne Gibson.
Yes.
Rusty Orick.
Yes.
Jerry Byrd. Warren Kids. J.C. Miller. J.C. Miller.
Yes.
Eugene Justice.
Yes.
Beverly Hall.
Yes.
Greg Lee.
Yes.
Charles Bear.
Go bear.
Yes.
I have just asked, uh, the planning creation. Number five on our list is the minor lots subdivision, Matthew Park Road Road. How many parts of our principal is that?
Yeah.
Ah, Rick, if you want to release them that way? I don't think we have a concrete of this.
I've got one, so y'all should. Yep, I should.
Mr. Bear, have you got anything in the document?
Yeah, you know, we're.
Current law, four point three four acres.
I'm sorry.
I'm on that side.
It's four point three four. They want to take an acre off.
Does any other cross?
He wants both sides of the road. He wants. He wants both sides. He murders right through there. State, I was going to say, highway. He's got road. Do all the land with the next. He's just cutting off an acre. The very plain already cuts across the property now, so it's going to be the same. With this new configuration, just an additional lot, most of it, an extra lot there.
I know they have water and electric.
So he on the here, too.
He on this and this and this. This state highway. Well. We know about it, yeah. It's already across. Right away.
Yeah, it's part of the right way on the, yeah. But actually, I'm. State of the road.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, yeah. You know, go, don't, it's got to be one or no. I'm just joking. I think that was in place before. You got a cave? Recommendation, Jordan? They beat it to the punch. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Recommendation, Jordan? Recommend.
I'd like to motion to approve.
We have a recommendation by Jordan, a motion by Mr. Miller. I need a second to approve. Number five on this is the urban growth.
I'll say.
We have a second commission, Gibson, any discussion? I think it meets all the criteria and I think it's been signed.
Yes. It's not pretty, it's flat, but. We don't.
You've got, what you got to work with? Any discussion? Kyle Rowell, please.
Marie Hairs.
Yes.
Scott Fields.
Yes.
Wayne Gibson.
Yes.
Rusty Orick.
Yes.
Jerry Byrd.
Yes.
Warren Kids.
Yes.
J.C. Miller.
Yes.
Eugene Justice.
Yes.
Beverly Hall.
Yes.
Greg Lee.
Yes.
Charles Bear.
Yes.
Motion passes. The last thing we have on the agenda night is, uh, number six is a, is a PUD site plan for Foxwood Drive. We got somebody represented here.
Yes, sir.
Now, who, who you all with? Robert Campbell?
Good evening. Yeah, I'm Alan Pettigale with Robert Campbell and Associates. And this is a developer. Mark, Mark, we're going to meet you guys. So last time, I, I think I see copies in your hands, which is good because, uh, Jordan Richardson is the engineer. He called me this afternoon. He says, had a family emergency. Can you go? And so I tried to print out any of them on our old epson, and so there's about half.
Everybody got a copy?
Oh, so if you've got copies, that's really good.
I sent one out to the agenda as well, so. I think last month, we got to the fourth, and, uh, over the years, there are not here that was locally. There was a problem with the, the actual size of the road.
Right, it was, uh, we presented an eighteen-foot pavement width and then a forty-foot rightaway.
Yes, sir.
The discussion was, can you make that twenty feet and fifty for?
It was actually tabled from last month. We didn't take no actions.
So since, yes, we've revised the plans to make a, uh, the twenty-foot road width and fifty-foot rightaway to be consistent with some of the other.
Did you just have to take a lot down to do that?
You, you may know better than me, did, I, I don't think we had to lose anything.
No, we basically pushed the houses to one side of the property line, so now they're at that ten-foot offset on the back property instead of fifteen foot. We got to adjust some decks to pull that off the property line now. That was the biggest, biggest issue that we had, so, um, otherwise it's, the elevation just drops extremely quick, so.
And that was the biggest discussion last month was the size.
Yeah.
The road. So you just met that requirement. Jordan, you had a chance to look over everything. I looked over briefly to see.
Yeah, um, everything else is pretty much the same. That, that was the sticking point for us last month. I got this for FYI, I got some communication from HOA that this property is a part of. They had some concerns, so I read through their, what they submitted, Mr. Ryan Murphy, uh, to the chair, president of HOA. Read through his concerns. I didn't see anything in there that we would have purview over that isn't, um, isn't up to our specs, up to our standards. So, okay, they've got their SWOT plan, their road control, they've got their, um, utility plan, they've got everything that we require, uh, on here, so I don't have an issue with it. We have a letter from Carable. Fire department's sent out last month. The chief, Eddie Hatmaker, said he's okay with the cul-de-sac. They put, they have a fire hydrant in there. Just had to verify that. It's in there. Looked at the last kind of few concerns that I had. So other than that, it looks okay to me. I don't have an issue with it. I think they provided us with what we require.
It's fully metered requirements and state requirements. Now, who will keep up? I mean, I know that Robert Campbell and we've been associating with Robert Campbell before.
Right.
Uh, who keeps up with all this change that's taken place on the property? Is that Robert Campbell to make sure this is?
Inspects it.
Yes, um, there is language in the plans here that specifies, maybe you all can script it out, but. Of course, we have our roads and pretend who will inspect it as well. Does the engineer do inspections on the during instructions? Is that how?
We, we do have an inspection group, so that's generally what we do, is that they'll take the latest version of the plan and that's the engineer's responsibility to make sure that, that inspector has the latest. And then he goes out and cold balls and strikes to make sure it's installed perfectly.
Yeah, that's, I believe that's in the notes I read. And, and we actually don't oversee that, the planning commission don't. We just, we advise the Foxwood by what standards that we have to advise by. But when you see layouts like this, you know that it's going to be a steep grade. And there's a lot of steep grades in Campbell County, aren't there? All over, so that, that's good that they've got this. So your recommendation, since they made our requirements.
I recommend approval. Yeah, they've got it in notes here, a site layout for inspections to land.
Anybody wants? Will it be a county road?
Probably.
They're going to ask you, yeah. County will have to accept it. Dovick will have to inspect it, make sure it's. But that'll have to come before this, this body first. As a recommendation, we'll request a letter from the roads superintendent to the county commission.
Sure.
So, uh, this body is never, since I've been here, we always wait on that letter from the roads superintendent. He's the main one that makes that decision.
Okay.
So if he don't make that decision, it will not be this committee.
How wide is it currently, or after your changes that you're presenting?
A twenty-foot wide road with a fifty-foot rightaway.
Which, and that's what we require.
Okay.
That's required.
I must have missed that on the front end.
So I need a motion, motion by Mr. Miller, I need a second for approval.
I'll say.
Have a second, Mr. Gibson. If you got any discussion, Mr., Ms. Harris.
I might just figure on the one. So we don't require any kind of bond or anything like that.
Not for.
I'm going to break the whole belly of you thing if we don't with this commission.
If he was. Let me think this through. Because this is a PUD, it's a different type of scenario, so. If, if it's a traditional subdivision, we, we could require a bond. They, if they, for example, they want to wait to put the top coat on until they build it out. You know, we can do a bond in that case, and then they can get final approval and settle the, settle the lots. In this case, it's a PUD, so it's going to be in common ownership, so that, from how we, we could require a bond. That is, that is a potential, and the HOA actually asked. The HOA is asking for a bond. I don't know if they have the ability to do that or not, or what, but. We don't really have a precedent for that in our, in our regs, only with a conventional subdivision, and this is not that, so. It's a good question. Sort of could require a bond.
Would the bond cover, like Matt?
She wrote there, you have, you have to cover, or do that, I don't know. I'm not sure exactly what the cover, but I don't think.
I'm not saying a whole one. I'm just asking a question. I'm a realtor, so I haven't seen it from both sides.
I know in the past, I think the last one that actually, and I wasn't on by the commission, it was Rainbow. I think that they were bonding to the place on Rainbow, but it was a big city name.
I think that they were bonding to the place on Rainbow, but it was a big city name. I wasn't worried, it could have, it could have something, things up my head, too. Should, we were should.
The Foxwoods Road is pretty decent shape right now, so what happens, like you're in construction, does that get a little bit?
Yeah, they are a member of the HOA, in my credit, this section will.
But this letter is from Ryan, the HOA president.
Yes. Asking for a bond. That's a county road as well, right? All the highway.
Yeah, he was asking for a bond for the, for the road, because we were planning to complete the road, get the construction first and then come back and finish off the road. So he was looking for a bond, set that money aside to make sure it got paid in the end.
Are you guys agreeing on that with the HOA or?
Well, we're in discussion, because I'm looking at just going to finish in the road and having it done, turn it over to the county and then we'll develop it.
Yeah, but then you're gonna tear it all pieces, those people will be complaining, the county commission.
Yeah, it would have to be.
And we ain't gonna assure you that the road superintendent will even accept it as a county bond.
I do, but Dovak looked at it.
He did go look at it?
Yeah, he looked at it according to Jordan.
Looked at the plan, too.
Yes. Yeah, I don't necessarily been there, but he looked at the plan and said it looks good.
Looked at the plan and he said it looks good. He's real conservative, they'll take in roads in the county.
Yeah.
I'm on the commission, we have a couple commissioners here, he's real conservative.
Yes, he is.
They have to meet the criteria, which is what meets the criteria. And hopefully it'll be vetted in and done, right? Planning on selling these lots.
Many times, the bond is just to make sure the developer does what he says he's gonna do. We were talking before the meeting, he's been at this four years, so he's, you know, I want him to stick to it and then, and to sell a lot of money invested with us, too, to do the plan. So I think he's in it for a long haul.
Things, people change, things change and it gets slow down and somebody else has got it in their hands.
We done on one out here, Bill, I'm trying to think back, three little houses.
Mr. Fields, maybe.
Down there. Down what?
Oh, yeah.
Did three houses. And every time one sold, they put X amount in the escrow account as they were selling.
Okay.
To keep the huge amount and come up with that bond like up the front, like it was built with that way. Then when they got done, there was thirty, twelve, five, twelve thousand five hundred per house. But when it got done, the last one, then the road got paid. I don't know, it's kind of complicated, but.
No, I understand. I mean, we've got a motion, a second on the floor, this is a good time for discussion. On the section of the road, and I know with us, you're not gonna have driveways going down to the lake, as steep as this is, so they're gonna be parking on the main road.
No, they'll actually be parking in front of each of the homes.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
But not on the road. Not on the road.
No.
So there's a section there that's been laid out, more parked.
Yep, immediately in front of the homes.
What kind of size of limitations on numbers of vehicles?
I don't.
And I know it's our per view, but I mean.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I haven't gone that far yet, but I can tell you.
If it's light property, it's gonna, they're gonna be parking on the road bed. And then what happens, the sheriff department's gonna be out there.
Yeah, there's five cabins on the property now, so on the upper section of it, so, and those properties are set up to accomplish traveling two to three vehicles, in some cases. Two at a time. Okay.
They park mostly in between them.
Um, in front and in between, yeah.
So these on the lower road is gonna be literally in front, like parallel parking.
No, so you'll have the road, the twenty foot road, and then off of that road, between the road and the front of the homes, you can see. There will be parking in these rectangular sections here. I said, you're gonna move with. Here, here. Maybe you see this section here.
I'm saying this, right here.
Yes.
So you're gonna, so I'm saying parallel parking in front of your house, it's part of your.
Yeah.
You're not parking in the road.
Yeah, not at all. That's not the exact.
My smaller. This was the older one?
Okay.
Same, so it's so thick. Alright, I'm good.
Any more questions? Nice.
I think it's a term of each stormwater infrastructure and, oh, make sure that retention basin is put in and the catch basin and all that. And I think Dovak won't accept the road if that's not done anyhow, so that'd be in terms of a bond, I would be concerned on that. Like I said, we don't have a precedence for that, for this type of development.
Can we adopt residence for this, so that's something we need to look at in the future, because this is actually, this is a couple that we've been faced with. First one never did come, it started but never did finish and it get going real random, random, and then, and I foresee more, I mean, more of these coming in the future. Any discussion?
I just gotta mention, Jordan, so our plan is to do the retention pond first. So all that happen first before we start constructing the road, so. That helps some. And then Alan's got some information on the stormwater.
Yeah, one thing that Jordan mentioned to me is that holding a, detaining a ten year storm is the requirement, but we upsized it and we can detain a twenty-five year storm at the end, so a little bit of overkill.
Good, that's good for that area, that's.
Yeah, for sure.
Everybody done? Good? Kyle Row.
Marie Ayers.
Yes.
Scott Fields.
Yes.
Wayne Gibson.
Yes.
Rusty Or.
Yes.
Jerry Byrd.
Yes.
Warren Kids.
Yes.
J.C. Miller.
Yes.
Gene Justice.
Yes.
Beverly Hall.
Yes.
Greg Lee.
Yes.
Charles Fair.
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, guys.
Anything else? Anybody in audience can speak to the planning commission, say this.
I guess we leave, I guess first of the year, this is the last meeting this year, and wishing you all Merry Christmas. Keep in your mind and your hearts David Goins' family. He was commissioner, served a couple of years here, served the county well, and remember them children. This planning commission is probably gonna be faced with a lot of few things that's coming up this coming year, so study and read and get prepared. Of course, property is not being made anymore.
No.
And it's left us to, by law, provides this, and I hope that we all follow the law when it comes to, that's all the thing we got to go by is guidance. Has anybody on this plan, please, can tell me the other?
Dr. Williams.
We've got a motion to adjourn. I need a second. Second of Miss Hall.